Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. King?
Here. We have three resolutions, proclamations here this evening that came from the mayor's office and signed by the mayor and council, so I'll open up by reading the first one. It's an Office of Mayor proclamation honoring Lackawanna College Rocket League eSports national champions, May 17th, 2023. Whereas the Lackawanna College eSports team won the Spring 2023 National Junior Athletic Association, the NJCAA Rocket League Championship on Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. And whereas this is the second time Lackawanna College eSports team competed in the NJCAAE National Tournament Championship. And whereas the team has six wins and one loss in the regular season, and went undefeated in the NJCAAE playoffs. And whereas team members included Guadalupe Oka, Matthew Kelly, and Zachary Chapa. And whereas Lackawanna College eSports Rocket League team was led to victory by Teddy Delaney, head of the eSports program at Lackawanna College, and Tristan Correll, coach of the team. Therefore, I page G. Cognetti, along with Scranton City Council members, congratulate the Lackawanna College eSports team on their championship and outstanding season. Great job. Mr. Smurl?
In the Office of the Mayor, proclamation honoring University of Scranton Royals, May 17th, 2023. Whereas for the first time since 2017, University of Scranton's men's basketball team has won the NCAA D3 Landmark Conference Championship. And whereas the Royals ended their regular season in the third seed with 20 wins and seven losses. And whereas the Royals also received three major landmark conference recognitions, Player of the Year, Jackson Danzig, All-Conference First Team, Jackson Danzig, and Will McGlocklin, and All-Conference Second Team, Stephen Bronstein. And whereas team members include Jason Danzig, Mason Thompson, Scott Graffin, Taj Parland, Colin Merriman, Nick Calucci, E.J. Matthews-Spartly, Stephen Bronstein, Cameron Coza, Luca Barta, John Spatola, Teddy Spratt, William McGlocklin, Luke Branton, and Matthew Hanley. And whereas the Royals are coached by Head Coach Danzig and Assistant Coach Jeff Frank. Therefore, I, Mayor Page G. Cognetti, along with Scranton City Council, would like to congratulate University of Scranton Men's Basketball Team with an outstanding season, and applaud their outstanding efforts and achievements.
Great job, thank you. And Dr. Rothschild, we have one more.
Yes, Office of the Mayor proclamation honoring University of Scranton Lady Royals, May 17th, 2023. Whereas for the eighth straight year, the University of Scranton Women's Basketball Team have won the NCAA D3 Landmark Conference Championship. And whereas the Lady Royals were undefeated in the regular season this year with 27 wins and zero losses, while also making it to the second round of the NCAA tournament. And whereas, the Lady Royals also received four major landmark conference recognitions, Coach of the Year, Ben O'Brien, Player of the Year, Bridget Monahan, Defense Player of the Year, Matty Ryan, and Rookie of the Year, Casey Cranston. And whereas Bridget Monahan and Casey Cranston were both selected to the All-Conference First Team, and Matty Ryan and Sam Raza both were selected to All-Conference Second Team. And whereas, team members include Hannah Angelini, Ashlyn Bender, Morgan Brewer, Ally Lynch, Casey Cranston, Jenna Sloan, Matty Hartnett, Sam Raza, Matty Ryan, Leah Nolan, Jenna Larrabee, Bridget Monahan, Emma Dorr, Mackenzie Steele, Sarah Walsh, and Kira Quigley. And whereas, the Lady Royals are coached by Head Coach Ben O'Brien and Assistant Coaches Canio Sianchi, Kathy Janko, and Jess Reeney. Therefore, Mayor Page G. Cognetti, along with Scranton City Council, would like to congratulate the Lady Royals on an outstanding season, and applaud their outstanding efforts and achievements.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. I can congratulate all three of those sports from two of our local colleges. Great job. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A, correspondence received from City Business Administration dated May 8th, 2023 regarding updated payroll preparation tax collections. 3B, correspondence received May 11th, 2023 from OECD regarding permits, licenses, revenue report for the month of April 2023. 3C, correspondence received May 11th, 2023 from OECD regarding cumulative permits, licenses, revenue report for January through April 2023. 3D, annual financial report for the city of Scranton year ended December 31st, 2021, prepared by the Office of the City Controller. 3E, Controller's Report for the month ending April 30th, 2023.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one. The Everhart Museum is having a Community Day Saturday, May 20th. It's free admission from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And they're also having free activities between 12:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Smurl. My announcement is I want to congratulate three of my colleagues sitting up here on their elections last evening. Great job. I know that you still have to continue on for the general election, but it was nice to see everyone was successful last evening. Does anyone else have anything?
I guess, well, I was going to say that for fifth order, but while you're congratulating our colleagues, congratulations to everyone who, up here, who will move on to November, and everybody who ran in the race yesterday, congratulations to all of them. It's an accomplishment when you've thrown your hat in the ring, so great job, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Before we move on to fourth order, just a gentle reminder about some council rules. I'll mention two things. One of the rules, there's obviously a list of council rules, but just a gentle reminder that no person, including members of council, shall use their time during citizen's participation to personally insult or attack any individual. And also name-calling, profanity, racial or ethnic slurs, and any other behavior that is inconsistent with the purpose and intent of conducting official business shall be permitted. I will say, generally, that does not occur in these chambers, but I just felt it was important that I announce that this evening. Thank you, fourth order.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Scranton. I too add my congratulations to Mr. McAndrew, Mr. Smurl, and Dr. Rothschild. You know, you should be very happy. John Murray was pouting all morning long because he got more votes than any of you. He needed him get a mention in the newspaper, but that's the way it goes when you're running on a post. Something I want to mention, there was a story in the paper on May 12th. These are 12 students who were part of the Miguel Nativity School that started fifth grade eight years ago. Sometimes you have people who come to the podium and complain about immigrants overall, insinuating that all immigrants are illegal, and they don't speak English, and they contribute nothing, and they're just sucking our tax dollars dry. If you read the story of these eight children, okay, they're now graduating high school. They came here eight or nine years ago. Most of them spoke little or no English. Their parents are working, their parents are paying taxes. Seven of the eight are going on to universities, and they've done very, very well. And I'm very proud of them. I hope this is the kind of immigrants that we attract to the city in the future. Now, item 5E, which is the legislation for the new auditor. I read through the contract, and lo and behold, there are two things missing. There's no timeline saying when the audit is due, as there was for Kahanski, and there's no 10% penalty clause. Go figure. If you could, though, if you can, through the administration, find out when they intend to deliver the audit, so we have an idea, and if they could give periodic reports on their progress, that would be helpful. Also, marabili dictu, on May 12th, on the website, the DPW contract. And that was, I was very happy, it only took eight months to get it posted, which brings me to a question. How long do you think it'll be before we see the firefighter's contract, which has been finalized, in April? You think before the end of the year?
I'm not going to guess, Joan, but I will inquire. Mr. Volenberg, can we ask the administration when they expect they're going to be able to have that fire contract available to post?
I will, Mr. King.
And are we making any progress on the arbitration for the police contract? I believe that's happening in the next week or so.
Yeah, just be aware that in April, according to the Controller's Report, Offburg, who's the council for, Labor Council, got paid $35,591.18, so he's breaking it in month after month. Item 3A, the payroll preparation tax summary, I don't understand the numbers for fiscal year 2023. They show 2022 first quarter, 1 point, let's see, $408,000 for first quarter of last year. This year, $3,847.55, and they break that down again, and a fourth quarter entry, and fourth quarter of 2023 is yet to come. Can somebody clarify the numbers they've given for 2023? They're confusing. And let's see what else. Any possibility of a replacement for Matt Domins as the Finance Director? I see his contract is in the legislation, but they're actively looking for a replacement. No takers?
Yeah, not at this time.
And I see that Eileen Zepriani is going to be paid $120,000 a year. $85,000 as BA, and then the $35,000 wearing her ARPA hat. Is she paying wage tax to the city because she doesn't live in the city? Are you sure? And has she been paying that wage tax since day one?
We can inquire.
You should, thank you.
That was something that I requested when we approved her waiver.
Okay.
In the beginning, she was, I don't know. I can't say currently.
There's an indication that she didn't pay it in 2021.
Thank you. Mr. Volenberg, if we could just inquire about that with the administration?
I will, Mr.
Thank you. Norma Jeffries?
Good evening, Council. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident, and I too want to add my congratulations to those that were successful yesterday, and following them through their campaign. It's not an easy job that they're doing, so if anyone just thinks that it's a piece of cake when someone throws their hat in the ring and gets out night after night and day after day, so they can get back to their families now and to their regular activities, so I do congratulate them all as putting their hat in the ring to try to make Scranton a better city and a better place for all of us. So congratulations to you all. The second thing that I wanted to ask about, and it just came up today, when we read the reading of the minutes in item D, and it says December 31st, 2021, is that 2021 that it took that many years to get those minutes into us? Is that, or is that a typing error?
I believe that's accurate.
It just seemed kind of strange that it was so long for it to get in there, to become a public record, so that's why I asked that question as well. And then the other thing that is on my mind, is I was out of town for two weeks, and I was down and visiting my son that's down in the media Springfield area. And after everybody was gone for the day, and I was there by myself having my coffee and getting, before I started today, and I heard all this noise outside, and I thought, hmm, what's that? So I go out to the porch there and look outside, and lo and behold, it's the city of Springfield, Delaware County, changing street signs. I says, oh, great, street signs are following me no matter where I go. So I thought, I said, gee, the street sign isn't even bad, so why are they out there? And what were they doing? So I sort of watched them as they did their work and everything. They basically changed the pole, and the sign was very visible. So of course, that then puts this question in my mind about our street signs here in Scranton. And the last time, as I drove through the city, I just see no additional street signs. I was given a report of at least, oh, I guess it might be 75 pages or more, of the street sign status and as to how they were going to be changed. It didn't make too much sense to me, because a lot of the things that were reported in that report did not deal with the changing of the street signs. It dealt with handicapped signs and stop signs and things like that. And I just, you know, it just baffles me when I come back to Scranton, and I see, as soon as you hit the city, and to see so many street signs that are missing, and/or inadequate that we can't make them out, especially in South Side. I was down in South Side to do some things and all, and I'm thinking, if it wasn't for my phone, I don't think I would have gotten to where I needed to go without that assistance. I just keep thinking, if they did 10 a month, 10 of, you know, certainly we can see some additional improvements with our street signs. And I know that in Delaware County, they've got Baltimore Pike, which is just loaded, and I'm sure their tax dollars coming in from all that business activity in their area. But still, I just cannot understand, and it just baffles me as to why we can't at least have, if we did 10 a month, we would make some kind of headway into the $9,000, $9,000 entries under the database that I was shown once. So, you know, I don't know. First, the machine was broken, and then it's not, so I don't know what is going on down there. But I think as a citizen of Scranton, and not just myself, it's all the citizens of Scranton, would like to see some further improvement with the street signs in Scranton. And we've got a lot of activity going on coming up this summer, and it would be great if we did not have to depend on our phones to get us to where we needed to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jeffries. Mr. Volenberg, can we inquire with DPW, get a status report as far as signs and kind of get an idea what the game plan is there to address that?
I'll do that tomorrow, sir. Thank you very much.
Les Spindler?
Excuse me, Mr. Spindler, before they start the clock for you, no, come on in, come on in. I just want to let you know, you weren't here the past two weeks, and it was reported out from DPW, they didn't have any containers to replace the ash cans that they, you know, took by mistake, and you've been waiting a year, so Mr. Schuster and I chipped in and got you two ash cans, they're right there for you. So don't leave without them, all right? Want to make you whole.
Oh, thank you very much. I don't think it was your responsibility to do that. Very thoughtful of the two of you, and I really appreciate it.
Didn't have to, but we wanted to.
Thank you very much.
Okay, go ahead, now you can talk.
Okay. My wife and I have been living in our residence, which we bought in 1989, it's 34 years now. And last year, I received a letter from Burckheimer about I'm not reporting taxes on my business. I've never had a business in my life, so I just ignored it. This year, I got the same letter, so I called, just the other day, and the woman said, oh, if you have a rental property, it's considered a business. I said, what? I said, I'm not selling anything, that's a business as if you're selling something for a profit. Well, when we took it over, the city never charged, but now we started charging, but long story short, the woman told me, as of last year, that was changed, and it's not considered a business. But I, they want me to send my copy of my Schedule E, and it would take me off the records. I said, why is that even necessary? If it's not a law anymore, why do I have to send it? Well, we need it to get you off our records. So I called my accountant's office, and I said, oh, you're not the only one with this problem, we've helped everybody, I'll just bring the letter and we'll take care of it. So I did that, took the letter over, and I said, they'll take care of it. It's unnecessary. They said, when they took over, I got the letter last year, they've been collecting taxes for the city in more than two years, haven't they? So there was an out-and-out lie, what you told me. So I, and I said in the beginning, they never should have been hired, they're a bunch of incompetent people that work there. And last year, other letters were sent to people, too, and just, it's almost a form of harassment. I shouldn't have had to go through what I did, but hopefully it'll be all taken care of. Once again, I'd like to know if there's anything that council heard about the intersection where I lived that was supposed to be fixed.
Mr. King? I think I reported on that fifth order last week, just looking for my notes.
I wasn't here, and I didn't watch. But, you know, they were supposed to fix the whole intersection, but my corner, first of all, is that every week, every rainstorm, it just deteriorates more, and I get more water in front of my house.
Mr. King, I believe they're going to make that part of the paving project, and until that time, they cannot do anything to alleviate the problem?
That's, that's correct.
I can have them contact Mr. Spindler tomorrow and explain it from a DPW standpoint.
All right, thank you. So apparently, that road is scheduled for paving, and they don't want...
Oh, it is?
Yeah, so...
Boy, that's a surprise, because that was paved not that many years ago.
Well, and I believe that they, you know, they want to make sure they'll address before they do the paving.
Okay. Lastly, spoken about this before, all this terrible gun violence in our country. It's just unbelievable how many innocent people are being killed, and I was happy to see at least one state took action. It's on the news the other night that the state of Illinois passed a law banning assault weapons. So if they could do that, why isn't it just a country law, a national law? If one state can do it, why can't we all do it? I found that a little unbelievable, that these politicians got to get off their butts and get together and make this country safe for people to live in. If Illinois could do it, the whole state, the whole country should be able to do it. And that's all I have to say tonight, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler.
Thank you again.
Bob Bowles?
Bob Bowles, Scranton, maybe Wes will use that to pick up everybody else's garbage. Give them something to do and keep them out of trouble. And I was looking at this here, where we're talking about $500,000 in Naug Park for courts and stuff like that, and such a waste of money that we're throwing away in Naug when we got, destroyed the pool, and why we all went to Naug Park, the recreation part of it, and it's an embarrassment. I think what you could do is maybe talk to Geisinger, since everybody's yelling about where to park. As you know, the Recreation Authority gave them the parking up there at Naug for almost a couple hundred cars. It averages out maybe a dollar a day, I filed a lawsuit over it, because I think it was a squandering waste of our property. Ask them to pay for the courts, and put this money toward trying to resurrect the pool and do something that's intelligent for people, something that we all grew up with, not what people today know about, but when we were kids, we used to go to Naug Park on Easter, they went to the zoo, it was a family affair to go there. And we've destroyed it, right here in the city of Scranton. We destroyed the pool, we destroyed the reason families can't go there and enjoy themselves. Now you want to put this in for somebody to play bass, tennis, and all that? It's a joke. We're just wasting money, and we're not taking care of the thing that's the most important to the economy and the growth of this place, is to be able to go somewhere and enjoy a swim. None of us are going to want to go to a splash park. Could you see all of us? All our gray heads walking around yelling, "Whippy, we're happy we're in a splash park"? That's what's wrong with it. And we got to make the changes, we got to take the hardcore attitude of what we need to bring it back. You know, we watched this get down the toilet, day in and day out. I brought up, I listened to the chief when he was talking, you know, we should be charging minimum two hours for a fire truck, or any apparatus that goes out, and what it costs, and then we figure, just like we do in the companies, we got to replace it, you got to do this, you add it all into what the cost should be. Maybe it's $1,000, $1,500 an hour to send that truck out a minimum two hours, period, the insurance company pays for it. We need that to start happening in our police department, our fire department. We need to take our DPW after they're done. We used to need to take our DPW, after they're done with their routes, start picking up commercially in the city, because we have a dumping contract, we have a tipping fee that we could live with, and bring in extra money out of pay for our equipment and stuff and take it off the back burden of our people in the city. And start looking in different directions as though we were a business here, and we are, this is a business. We deal with it every day. Are we happy about the Biden signs that Gahan put up in Scranton? No. Some are, some aren't, but you never took into consideration, all of us in Scranton, when he was sitting up here, to put it on a referendum. And we go to the polls and vote, do we want Spruce Street backed, or do we want Biden Street? The embarrassment we're having around the country from this guy and his family, yet Scranton is always mentioned. And we are Scranton, it's not an individual, it's all of us in this city, whether you're Republican, Independent, Democrat, or whatever the heck you are. But when Gahan and everybody did all this, they took away our voice, and I'd like to see our voice come back in at the polls, to vote for whether we want Biden's name on the street sign on the expressway or along 81, where people think we all sit here and enjoy what they're doing to our country, our people, opening the floodgates and saying, here, come on in. My grandfather's and grandmother's came to this country, they came through as immigrants, and they came through the right way. Why is Biden allowing all these people just to rush in here? And we sit there and say, okay, go ahead, run wherever you want to go. Our country is destroyed. We put uniforms on to defend our country, and we're giving our way with this idiot, we're giving our country away, and we're embarrassing the people in Scranton that are supporting him. And I'm asking now at the pops, will he go for a resolution right now or a vote to change the streets and get his name off the streets? He's got this place where he lived, that's enough, but don't embarrass all of us, because Gahan did what he's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Dave Dobson?
Good evening, Council, Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton. You know, there was an apartment house that was closed down up on Vine Street, I think it's somewhere around Vine and Colfat, or Prescott. And the reason it was closed down was because they found two overdose deaths and somebody else just about hovering near the pearly gates, but 25 people were forced to move out of there. And naturally, they probably all weren't involved in drugs, and I would recommend that we, if we want to punish an apartment, with 25 people being out of a house and home from around Christmas time, I could only imagine the problems we might have created for people that weren't involved. So, it's just something to consider. And congratulations to the winners and condolences to the people that didn't make it. If you go on a trolley ride down at the Trolley Museum, just before you turn to go into the tunnel, that'll be on your right and cross the brook. And then on your left, there's an entrance to a mine that probably was abandoned 110 years ago. And the point being that that mine is aimed right at the Naug area. So, we probably have a great deal of land up there that's undermined, and the going downstairs with, or underground with the parking garages for Geisinger is probably a fantasy. You might have to wind up driving pillars down just to be able to build on top of it. And once again, I'm going to mention, Geisinger was acquired by a hospital conglomerate on the West Coast, and they, in Kaiser, I was talking to my doctor last week, and he has some Jewish kids, he services the people at Yeshiva, and he was never paid for students that were covered by Kaiser Insurance on the West Coast. The point being that either you're in their network or you don't get help with the payments. And it's, I certainly hope, they say not in the article, but I certainly hope that Geisinger doesn't wind up someday taken in only their insurance. And once again, the tax exempts. And what I've always proposed, so people understand, is that the tax exempts in this town, and I don't care if they're nonprofits or if they're some kind of government building or whatever, band together and get together with us and go to Harrisburg and start to press for compensation for Scranton, because we're probably drifting on to 40% tax exempt. I was at a, at a school meeting, and that was a long time ago, but a man named Chris Phillips stood up, he was on the board, the school board, and his claim was from '92 to 2009, the University of Scranton cost the school taxes $28 million. A lot of money. And naturally, you know, a nonprofit really shouldn't pay taxes, the students would have to pay those taxes. But the point is, they could band together with us and start to get some kind of motion on this, because 40% is starting to become insufferable. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. That exhausts the sign and list, is there anyone else who would like to be heard?
Evening, members of council, Tom Coyne Menucha. First, I want to address 3D on the agenda tonight. What I find interesting in looking through that is on page four, which is actually page 12 of the document, and there's a four on the bottom of it, it lists as non-resident tax collected, that the, under Tax Code 30500, the estimated revenue for the city was $100,000. The actual revenue collected according to that document was $0.00. Well, we all know for a fact that Ms. Cipriani started with this body, 518 of 2020, and has worked all the way through. So, I don't know how the, how it's possible, when city employees, who we know have waivers of employment, that is part of the waiver of employment, that they've agreed to pay non-resident taxes, that the city of Scranton, according to its own financial audit, has not collected a single penny for non-resident taxes. Are you also, from that report, meaning to tell me that no people who work in Scranton actually live outside the city of Scranton? Why is it zero? How's that possible? Does anyone have an explanation of how we are not receiving any of our non-resident taxes?
Good question.
Moving on, 7A. It's amazing that the pool requires a survey, a second survey, then an overall comprehensive plot for Naug Plan, before we can even consider putting forward funding to decide where a pool goes. But we can put through a grant for $500,000 to use a multi-purpose Naug Park Plan, with no physical plan, with no instructions, with nothing of where it's going to go, but it's fine to requisition money for pickleball courts and cement covering and gazebos, with no direction on where any of that's going to be placed. But when it comes to a pool, well, we can't get any money allocated to that until we have iron concrete plans for plans for plans. I'd strike it down just for that and say, without an idea, because if I was the mayor, I would take that concrete and some of that pavilion, and I would put it right over the pool complex, so that you guys couldn't build a pool and it would shut you up. That way, there could only be a splash pad there, and no one would have to worry about the pool anymore. Not that anyone would be that nefarious as a plan, and I don't see that happening, but it's always a possibility. The rental fee that I brought up, rental fee for the, for the city is $45 per unit. Looking at the University of Scranton, I crunched the numbers, according to their pages of 2020, the last out, full-time students are 4,638 students, 89% of them go to student housing, according to their own documents. That is 4,127 students in housing. Take the $45, times all of those units that are being housed, and what would the city get? Wow, that's actually more than the pilot that they're paying. I guess we don't need the money. We need to start bringing that in, because that's money that needs to come into the city. And if regular citizens are paying it, universities that are making a lot more need to pay it. I have a problem with the dual position for OECD. If OECD is getting a new position, that person should get the extra money for the ARPA funds, so they should be in charge of it, not Cipriani, she shouldn't have a dual role. If she's moving, she should move over, and whoever the new OECD person is, they should actually be the ones who are in charge and dealing with the ARPA administration funding. And on the last point of that is, since she is in the new position, she is now no longer on the old one and has a residency requirement here. She had a waiver for the old position, she needs to move here to Scranton for the six months, for six months from the day she took it, or get another exception. And she shouldn't get that, because if she wants to be on a plan, on a, as a business administrator, and is interested in holding that position, Luzerne County has that position, and she should go there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Smearle, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, a couple. A few weeks back, we were, I discussed Adams Avenue and North Washington Avenue behind the old Central High School where they had merged together. I believe it was PennDOT and the city went down, it is all repainted now, there's, the lanes are very specific now, so there are not two cars coming across there at the same time now, where they try to all merge together. So, that is, that is all complete over there. And I've got a late complaint for 1,100 block of Jackson Street, about commercial trucks parked there, cars parked on sidewalks, and, and over the curb and stuff. So, Mr. Volenberg, I had forwarded that to you a little while ago, so if you will forward that to the law department again, about the commercial vehicles and cars on sidewalks. And also, if you would copy the chief also with that.
I will, Mr. Smearle.
Thank you. And my last thing is the Naug Pool. We've had a meeting about Naug Pool, we have started talking about it, what we want up there, and it is moving, so, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smearle. Mr. Schuster?
I got to get out a little bit yesterday, and I did get a list of complaints that I've, I took throughout the day, so I'll get them over to Mr. Volenberg. I know Mr. King said last week that the mayor is looking into that U of S rental fee, so that's something I'd like to see, so maybe if we could send something over to see where we are in regards to the rental fee for those University of Scranton apartments. Did we ever get, we got somewhat of an update when I put in a list of complaints around the Alpha Street, North Main Avenue, Parker Street area, and I know we got a little bit back, but have we had any updates on that since then?
Not in the last week, sir. I'll follow up.
Thank you. Yeah, I took a drive-through there yesterday, and some of those, which appear to be abandoned cars are still in that area. Nothing has really changed in terms of the cars. Other than that, I'll send some emails over to you, Frank, about what I, what I received yesterday.
Thank you, sir. Set it, Mr. Smearle. Thank you, Dr. Rothschild.
Yes, I've received a few complaints that I want to forward along to the appropriate departments. The first one being 718 Taylor Avenue, there were new owners, out-of-town landlords that took over the property, and according to neighbors, they're looking to convert it to student housing, or they're currently in the process of that. And the person who contacted me had a question regarding the zoning, if it was appropriate for them to create student housing on that property, because they think not. So, if we could please forward to code enforcement and zoning to sort that out, to determine if, if they're allowed to have student housing at that property.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And then for 642 Birch Street, it's, it's an empty lot owned by the land bank that's overgrown and needs to be cut, so I wanted to forward that to DPW. I know that Councilman Smearle has also been taking care of some of those properties, but I just wanted to make sure they're aware of it as well, and can, so they could sort out who's, who's going to take care of that property.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And lastly, 336 Geraldine Court, it's littered with, with trash outside, I saw pictures of it, and it's, it's in pretty bad shape, so I'd like code enforcement to get over there, and then, you know, perhaps DPW to, to help with it, if, if that's part of their responsibility, but I think it would be on the, on the owner to, to clean the trash up that's along the side of the property.
That's been reported, I don't know what the delay is, I'll find out.
Okay, thank you. And that's everything that I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew?
Yes, I just, excuse me, I just have one thing tonight. So, I know I'm a broken record when it comes to the Western Field, the lovely ladies that try to use that pool every day, but I don't mind being a broken record for them, because they've been very patient, and, you know, we're still without Parks and Rec Director, and I remember last year, even before they hired the, the one that just left, that, and by, by request of one of the swimmers, which was a great idea, during the interview process, when you hire this Parks and Rec Director, make sure that they're certified, lifeguard training. Their office is going to be there, they can help out when there's little, little snafus where they, they don't have a lifeguard. So, my understanding, they're still without lifeguards, there's no consistent swim days for them, and they're paying members. So, you know, like, most of the time, with regard to like the pool and the splash pad, Lacawanna is getting that right. Lacawanna also got it right with developing or signing a contract with American Red Cross, so they'll provide lifeguards for them, and also free training paid by them to get and acquire lifeguards. So, please reach out to administration and ask them, hey, why can not, why can we not utilize the same services from America and Red Cross? Let's enter in a contract, because what we're doing isn't working, they're failing these, these paying members. So, please look into that and make sure that the resident was heard about the certification process for the new director, they should have that cert, it makes sense. All right?
I'll follow up on that.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. When Mr. Smearle and I met with the mayor the other day concerning the pool, and I will say, we were pretty adamant about the fact that we do want a pool at Naug Park, and I think she is coming around to the idea that five members sitting on this council want to see a swimming pool at Naug Park, and I think that ultimately, we're going to try to make that happen. But it was brought up about lifeguards, and she indicated that they increased the hourly rate to $16 an hour for lifeguards. rate to $16 an hour for lifeguards, and I believe it was brought up about the Red Cross.
I told Eileen, she said she would contact.
So Eileen Cipriani is going to contact the Red Cross, the very thing that you had just mentioned concerning lifeguards, because that is important. And, you know, as you said, those residents, they pay a fee down there at Western Field for that indoor pool, and it's not right that they don't have the opportunity to be able to utilize the pool on a regular basis since they're, you know, they're paying that fee. I do need to announce.
Councilman King.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was just wondering, did they say if the increase in their wage has increased the amount of applicants that they have for lifeguards?
I don't know that answer.
No, when she said that they were increasing the wage, and I had remembered the county had said they use the American Red Cross, and I said, instead of us going through all of that, putting them on our payroll and going through all that, why don't we look into that first? And Eileen Cipriani said that she would look into that.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
We did have an executive session this evening to discuss contracts. Also, in terms of some follow-up, for Joan Hodouanis, City of Scranton Audit Summary will be advertised in the newspaper on Friday, May 19th. Also, there was a question from Joan concerning Dr. Andrew Lozella. We did some research and found that he was reappointed to the City Scranton Ethics Board for a term expiring on August 31st, 2027, under Resolution Number 113, 2022. For Marie Schumacher, she had brought up 842 Music Street. There was garbage on Music Street. A door tag was issued on April 11th, followed by citation totaling $100 on May 17th. Also, she was sent to 2023 Paving List for her request. Some issues that were brought to me recently, Mountain Lake Road, DPW is going to visit that address to review some water issues at the baseball homeowner's driveway, also 1515 Cherry Street. That resident's been waiting for DPW to be able to come up and address. There was a request, I had the VAC truck come up and check the drainage lines at the end of his driveway extending out into the roadway. From what I understand, the VAC truck has been down for a few weeks. It's being repaired, so hopefully they're going to be able to get up there to check those drainage lines. Also, 2200 block of Winfield Avenue, I had a request that the Scranton Police Department review a resident's claim regarding speeding and double parking and traffic issues behind Kennedy Elementary School. And there's obviously concerns that somebody may get hit with a vehicle or a bus for that matter. So we've asked the Scranton Fire Department to look into that matter. Also, the DPW contract is posted now on the website. That's all I have. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance. Amending file to Council Number 33, 2022, an ordinance as amended entitled, Appropriating Funds for the Expenses of the City Government for the Period Commencing on the First Day of January 2023 to and Including December 31st, 2023, as amended, by transferring $2,200 from contingency account number as noted to Lackawanna Heritage Valley Trail Maintenance Account Number as noted.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an intergovernment agreement of cooperation by and between the borough of Music and the City of Scranton here and after participants for the delegation of certain governmental responsibilities with respect to a certain portion of Stafford Avenue.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the City of Scranton to execute and enter into an independent contractor agreement extension with Matt Dominus to provide finance director services to the City of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, so when looking at the backup of this document, there's a couple things I noticed, that we have a vacancy for a finance director. I know we use grant money to put Mr. Dominus in the position that he's in right now, but I didn't realize he hadn't accepted this position and they're actively looking for someone to fill the position. I really honestly would have liked to have seen Mr. Dominus apply for the BA's position. I would have been in agreement with that. So, Mr. Voldenberg, can we look at a, can we ask the administration for a timeline of these funds? We had a $50,000 grant that was going to go towards research into the lowering of taxes in Scranton. That money was then switched over to keep, to put this position or to fund this position. So now what I'm seeing is the pay rate here under this contract is $85,000 a year, which some of that money had to come somewhere to make up that difference when the funding for the position is actually $56,610. So if we can get, before I approve this in final passage, if we can get a timeline of where the funding sources came from, how Mr. Dominus was paid in the 2022 year, and how we're making up these differences, that would be very helpful for me to pass this.
I'll get that information, sir.
Thank you.
Also on the question, I agree. How are we paying this gentleman? I mean, he's done a great job. I actually voted against him because I thought there was enough employees that should stand up and do their job, right? But now, he was being paid by a grant. So I agree with Mr. Schuster. How are we going to pay him, even if it's $7,000 a month moving forward until they replace him? I'd like to know that before final passage.
I'll find that out, sir.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a master services agreement with Clifton Larson Allen LLP to perform the City of Scranton's independent post audit and single audit for years ending December 31st, 2022, 2023, and
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, on the question, as Mrs. Hodouanis had indicated, there's no timeline indicated in there as to when it is due. I think the expectation is that it will be due on time, which would be September 30th. But just if we could ask the administration, you know, why that was omitted, or can it be added, and also inquire about the 10% penalty.
On the question, I agree. I also would like to see that specified in there considering the issues that we've had with the contracts in the past. And if we could also ask about her question regarding the penalty fee, why that's not included in this contract as well.
Also on the question, Solicitor Gallagher, I'll also ask that you take a look at this and review if anything stands out to you.
The price, some of the fees at the end, just probably get, I'll touch base with Frank and get some clarification from the administration.
All right, thank you very much.
Also on the question, how does administration send this piece of legislation down? We have so many problems with the past three years of getting this audit done on time without having even a date set on it. It's unfathomable.
I don't disagree, although, you know, that's why we go through these readings, so I'm going to vote to introduce it this evening, but we need to make sure that we get these questions answered and hopefully amend that prior to final passage.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad that was brought up. I mean, if it's not in there, we're not going to expect it at any date, and if we're receiving it, when we're receiving it now with the date, I'm not sure when we would get it, so thank you.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution. Appointment of Eileen Cipriani to the position of Business Administrator as well as American Rescue Plan Act Director effective May 4th, 2023.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I've consistently voted no for her residency waiver, for the simple reason it's not fair to anybody else. And now, I'm being asked to approve her appointment for $120-some thousand. She's going to make more than the mayor. She's going to make more than the chief of police. She's going to make more than the fire chief. She's going to prepare a budget and decide how residents' money is being spent, not being a resident. So, and it's nothing personal, but I just, I'm just, I can't. I'm a no.
Also on the question, Mr. Voldenberg, if we could please look into whether the wage tax has been paid for '21, '22, and seeing where we're at with '23. Originally, this position was a $52,000, well, originally when she was hired with the waiver, it was a $52,000 position. At that point in time, I didn't think it was enough money to move into the city. I felt I could give a waiver on that, but we've changed that salary from $52,000 to $80,000 to $100,000 to $120,000. At this point in time, I think we should be moving to this city, and as Mr. McAndrew said, if we're going to be dictating how the taxpayers' money is being spent, I think we should be a resident.
On the question, Mr. Voldenberg, if you could send a request to the mayor's office, I'd like to inquire the, to get the total amount of funding that Eileen Cipriani has brought into this city during her time here working for the city. I think it's, I think we're going to find out that it's substantial, and I think that she's done an excellent job. So I'm going to be supporting that this evening.
With that being said, you know, the grant funding that we're bringing in and the department that we're in, I think it's probably the best fit to be in that position rather than switching over, but.
On the question, I support Ms. Cipriani in the role as BA. I'm also going to support her in this role as ARPA Director. She has been integral to the development of ARPA plans for the city, and I don't think anyone working for the city knows ARPA as well as she does. And so I think that's why she's been in that position already and is helping to continue to run ARPA, and so I have all the faith that she'll continue to be able to do that in her new role.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Three, two. The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption. Resolution Number 228, 2023. Ratifying and approving the city's acceptance and administration of grant funds from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for up to $500,000 to be used for the Naog multi-purpose courts and pavilion project.
What is the recommendation, chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I know I asked last week about the location of these courts. Did we get any response back about the location of the courts, Mr. Voldenberg?
Other than what Mr. Smurl indicated at the meeting, no. And I'm still waiting on word regarding any demolition that'll take place on the project.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to table this, to hold off until we get that information, if anyone would give me a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to table this. On the question?
On the question, I did speak with Bob Gattens, chairman of the Rec Authority at the park, and I spoke with the administration also. I asked that they would both get together and decide where this is going, to be placed permanently. But naturally, I'm not going to try to hold this up. This is too important to our children to stop this, so I'm going to support moving this.
Okay, there's been a motion to table Item 7A in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
No.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
No.
So we'll go back to the original motion, 7A. On the question again?
On the question, I'm not going to hold up a grant project, and I do see, you know, the motion to table has failed. The application date was the first of May. The application has already been sent in. I just felt this was a, you know, we, council should be able to get information in a timely manner to make decisions before items are placed in seventh order, and that's where I stand on it, but I won't hold up the grant funding.
On the question, I would also ask Mr. Voldenberg if he could please inquire with the administration and find out for us definitively where exactly, you know, the plan is to place these courts, and if in fact the Rec Authority has been involved, and maybe a timeline for when that decision will ultimately be made. I will, Mr. King. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the question?
On the question, sir.
I'm not holding up anything either. Wanting more information to make a better informed decision is not holding anything up for the children or anybody else. It's a week. So, I mean, of course, I'm not going to hold it up now, but asking for a little more time to make an informed decision isn't always a bad idea.
To the point that Mr. McAndrew just tried to make, as I said, the deadline for this application was the first of May, so the application is already in. This was just holding up the final passage until the council received the information we requested.
On the question, I'd like to see this project get moving along. I do appreciate some of the comments before regarding getting a master plan for the complex, but I believe there are other comments about how, like, who wants pickleball courts, and I mean, I think we need to make Naog attractive and usable by all groups of people, and I think there is, there has been a lot of interest, and this is a sport that's really gained a lot of popularity and is recreational use, and I support it and I'm excited to see new things being added to the park. I do, of course, still want to see that as a part of a bigger plan, and I'm looking forward to us getting more information on that, hopefully in the near future.
Again, on the question, this is a final passage of approving for the acceptance of the funds, so if the funds were to be awarded, we are preemptively approving the acceptance of those funds.
On the question, I don't have any problem with accepting these funds to be used for this purpose. I'm not sure that that information would, that we are looking for, would change my mind on this.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption. Resolution Number 229, 2023. Ratifying and approving the city's acceptance and administration of grant funds from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for up to $2 million to be used for the Streetscape and Stormwater Linden Street Project.
What is the recommendation, chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A. Resolution Number 226, 2023.
This is a restaurant liquor license, and it had been tabled until a public hearing was held this evening. It will be placed in seventh order next week for a final vote. After no further business, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.